President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and go on to item number five, which is the AMGL CPA's Audit Report. Marcy, I believe you are on Zoom.
Marcy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you guys fine. Is all you can hear in?
Can you guys hear that? Or do you want me to send it through the TV? You're good on my computer? Okay. We're good, Marcy. You have the floor.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just get together with you tonight and run through just briefly your audit report fully hashed here and give you guys an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. So just a couple of things I want to point out in the bound audit report on page two is our audit opinion and review and unmodified opinion, which is always what you want when you work through a project. Jumping ahead to management, assessment, analysis over on page six shows that the general fund this past year, the revenues exceeded expenses by about 250,000. So you increased the fund balance in the general fund. Your overall general fund costs were 0.1% less than last year. So just a slight decrease coming in just a little over 6 million. And then your student average daily membership decreased by nine students. So you're at 263 for this past year. On page seven and eight, there's some comparative introductions. Page seven shows assets, liabilities, and net position or equity compared to last year. And you can see that all three, assets, liabilities, and equity all increased this past year. Page eight shows the governmental activities compared to the prior year. You can see that your receipts were up 292,000. It's primarily the tax category that saw the largest increase. Your expenses were up 355,000 and construction was the one that increased the most. That increased about 307,000 of that 355 increase. Page nine shows your nutrition fund. So your revenues were up this year compared to prior and your expenses were down. So overall, your nutrition fund ended up increasing net position by 31,000. Now included in that increase was a transfer from the general fund of about 65,000. So there was about 14,000 more transferred from the general fund. But that's why we had the increase in the nutrition fund balance. Moving ahead to page 11. On page 11, we summarize the larger asset as far as purchases. This year, you guys' depreciation outpaced capital asset additions by about 128,000. And you can see the larger, those bullet points that are listed there are the larger capital asset purchases that you made. Over on page 12, we show your long-term debt that did increase a bit as you guys issued some new financing agreements or consumer equipment. So there was a new, or your debt increased about 83,000 due to the issuance of those new financing agreements. Over on page 14, we link to your main financial statements. And there we see the government-wide activities. And on this view, we show the capital assets, the long-term debt, and the first line of equity is called net investment in capital assets. And so those three categories, which net to 2,382,000, are basically the items that you don't normally look at on a monthly basis. Your monthly financial statements are going to be cash and maybe include county treasury cash. But this shows you the overall picture, including your capital assets and that long-term debt. On page 15, we've got government-wide again, but this shows that unique government view where we start with expenses by function. Any direct revenue sources are then charged against that, so whether it's charges for services, operating grants, there are no capital grants. But it brings you over on the right-hand side of the page. That first subtotal is about 5.4 million. And this represents your governmental expenses that do not have direct revenues, revenue sources to pay for them. And so that's what primarily, as you drop down to the bottom section of the right-hand side, taxes paid for in taxes and about half a million dollars of state aid help cover those additional expenses that do not have direct revenue sources through grants or charges for services. Over on page 16 is the, it's a manual look that you guys are worried least looking at. This shows the governmental funds with just cash and county treasurer cash presented. If you look at our first column of the general fund, we see cash was about 3.1 million at the end of the year. That's about 6.2 months worth of your general fund operating expenses. Now, we like to see that being at right in that six-month range. We always say between three and six months, six months being the ideal, simply because of the timing on when property tax is coming for you guys. You know, your next big hit of property tax is going to be April 30th of this next year. And so that's a pretty long period. That's why it's important to have these cash reserves built up. Because there is a significant period of time that we run without having large property tax receipts. The other thing I wanted to point out for page 16, the other governmental funds are the three smaller funds that you have. They're presented back on page 47, but it consists of the employee benefit, excuse me, it's two funds for you guys, employee benefit and the activity fund. They get rolled up into that other governmental. Over on page 18, we see the revenues and expenses for the same governmental fund. The first column shows your general fund. If you look at the full length from the bottom, you see 253,000 was the amount that revenues exceeded expenses for your general fund. The next column depreciation fund showed an increase of about 73,000 for fund balance. That included a $200,000 transfer from the general fund to the depreciation to reserve those dollars this past year. And then again, the other governmental is going to be employee benefit and activity. The nutrition fund is shown on page 21. And as I mentioned earlier, we didn't have a lot of the disbursement's exceeding receipts before the transfer from the general fund. There were 65,000 that came in, and then you ended up with a positive revenues exceeding expenses for the year. Let's jump back through a couple of these pages, back to page 31. Well, on page 31, we show the total cash of the district. We've totally, 5,75,000 at the end of the year. You can see how it was broken down among the various activities. Page 32 shows your capital assets, and I always like to look at that additions column. The first subtotal 314,000 were the new purchases of assets. The next subtotal 442,000 is depreciation. So you can see this year depreciation outpaced reinvestment by about 128,000. Page 33 shows your long-term debt. Financing agreements, you entered into a new financing agreement for 133,000 and you paid down on the existing. The one that you had previously, that one got paid off. We now have the new one. The principal requirements over the next four years are shown at the bottom of page 33. So it'll be about 33,000 a year for four years to pay that obligation. The pension footnote, if we jump back to page 36. On page 36, I want to point out, and you guys are probably familiar with this, but the state enacted LV645, we passed LV645, and that changed the rate of withholding for your employees on their N-First plan. We think this is a very good thing because the N-First plan is what we call a defined benefit plan. So it doesn't matter how well-funded that plan is, your employees are only going to receive what they're going to receive under the formula. So even if the plan was 120% funded, they're going to receive the same amount. So what the state has done is they're looking at it annually now. And if the plan this past year was 99.9% funded, so they implemented an 8% withholding rate. The district matches 101% of that. Now that compares to 9.78% withholding before with a district match of 9.88. So you can see you're now at 8.08. This is really a good thing because as that plan has done very well, your employees are not benefiting from that growth in the plan. And so this enables the employees to have more take-home pay and utilize that to first just put into their own 403B account or use for themselves versus it just being lost. So we think LV645 was a great thing that was passed. What shows under that table is for this past year, you guys did contribute 282,000 to that N-First plan on behalf of your employees. That was the district's 101% match. The paragraph at the bottom of the page, first sentence shows that your share of the overall N-First overfunding was an asset of about 547,000. This is based on the actuary's best estimates of how that plan is funded compared to all the promises that have been made. Page 39 gives a nice sensitivity analysis. I mentioned, do I consider you 507,000 set for the overfunding? This shows that the percent was 1% less return over time. You'd actually have a liability of 1.7 million. If it's 1% better, you'd have an asset of about 2.4 million. So that's going to fluctuate over the years. But it just gives you a good idea that the plan is very well-funded and now they're adjusting the withholding as a result. Jumping ahead a little bit more, we're going to go, I'm too many on here, page 43. The commitments shows that at the end of the year, there was a commitment to a bus purchase as well as a weight room flooring. But the, the bus commitment was the larger one with 174,000 dollar commitment out there for next year's expected delivery. We get into budget versus actual. The district was inclined with all its budget requirements. So you spent less than your budget authority, which is what's required by state statutes. Pages 47 and 48, as I mentioned earlier, are the role of those two smaller funds that we talked about. And on pages 49, 50, you can see the various organizations making up 135,000 of activity fund dollars that were held at the end of the year. So you can see how that worked down by organization. We provide a little bit more detail on your county treasurer receipt breakdowns for the two taxing funds. And then the very last two pages of the report are the internal control and compliance report. Because you guys are a governmental entity, a government district, we have to present this report. And what we always remind you guys of on page 54 is the significant deficiency because you are a smaller organization. And I say about 98% of our clients speak this comment, but it just reminds you as board members, smaller organization, there's a limited number of people that handle the finances. So it's just important if you guys are approving claims, if you're signing checks, if you're looking at the financials, just ask the questions that come to mind because your role is an important part of the monitoring. And it does help just provide other sets of eyes looking at things and asking questions to help with that lack of segregation duties. We also issue a couple of letters. The one just reemphasizes the segregation duties. The other letter, after the first paragraph, it has underlined significant audit matters. This is just required communication from us as auditors back to you guys as board members and some standard things that we include in here. The second page of that letter, we summarize the audit adjustments that we proposed. But we proposed six adjustments, which decreased the fund balance of the general fund by 241,000. This was primarily property tax, county treasurer cash adjustment. The county treasurer cash was down significantly at the end of August. And this was due to the change by the state. The state started paying out the school district's property tax credit during the year rather than having the taxpayers pay it and then claim it on their tax returns. So you guys got that tax in advance. You didn't get extra money. You got the tax that you asked for, just the timing of it. It came in earlier than usual. Normally, the second half of that would have been sitting in county treasurer cash. We also saw that reflected through the building fund where the building fund property tax decreased, or county treasurer cash, I should say, decreased 7,800 compared to the prior year. So really kind of routine audit adjustments. The last page of this letter is where we would put any recommendations if there were additional things that we ran into, whether it be documentation or just other recommendations. And there weren't. So the audit very smoothly, there were no additional findings or items that we wanted to communicate. So I think everyone, Alicia and everyone's doing a great job with the books. Yeah. And so the audit went smoothly and I will turn it back to you guys for these questions that you have.
Hey, do you guys have any questions for Marcy?
Yeah, I had one on page 32 in regards to disposals of computer equipment, 109,000. Does that show that our depreciation schedule doesn't accurately match the life of the equipment? Or it just seems like a big write-off for rotating in-duty equipment? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I think your question was in regards to the disposals that show up or is it the paragraph down at the bottom?
No, the disposal number.
The disposal number showed that there was computer equipment that you guys replaced with a new financing agreement. The computer equipment that rolled off was fully depreciated. And so the disposal cost and accumulated depreciation matched. So the bottom line, the net capital shows a negative, a zero, basically a blank. So that was fully depreciated computer equipment that was disposed of.
Okay, yep, that was my question.
Yep.
Any others?
Marcy, it sounds like we got crickets around here. So thank you for taking your time.
I think that's, I think that's a good thing. I have hopefully, it's not, I haven't put them to sleep, but just no questions. So we appreciate working with you guys. And I appreciate your time and letting me just present tonight. As always throughout the year, if there are questions, please reach out. We're glad to help, okay?
All right. Thanks, Marcy.
Thanks. Have a great evening.
You too.
All right, bye-bye.
Let's go ahead and go on to number five, and we're going to go to Northland Toman, and you're going to be talking about QC puff, QC puffs.
Get my computer back off of the Zoom.
My question are all Wood River grad is that, right?
Yeah, 100%.
No. Alicia. We're on a sliding scale. No. No, I wish most people.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me. I don't know if I, I know everybody. I did work with the district on the last refunding of the bonds before they were, they were retired and have been working within the public finance team for First National now 12 years. If you don't know prior to that, I was a superintendent at Perkins County. So hopefully that's a good, not something against me, but. Mr. Webb, you're asking me to come tonight just to give kind of a high-level overview. I don't know if you have, you have an understanding of or been a part of QC puff bonds or not. But that's kind of what I just want to give a high-level overview of and kind of share a model based on your district's valuation and current rates on what you could consider if you were going to consider doing a QC puff financing. So the first couple of slides are really just statutory language. I'm not going to read them to you. But QC puff stands for Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund. And the QC puff statute was put into place to allow school boards to address a broad, broad number of projects that fall under categories like life safety code issues. So when you think about that, fire suppression, moisture and mold abatement, ADA accessibility barriers, the last couple of years, it kind of rolled in safety and security into that. When I talk to the bond attorneys who are kind of the final judge and jury on whether potential projects fall under the statute. They said there's not a lot of real guidance on safety and security yet, so it's pretty flexible. So we're seeing some different projects kind of fall under QC puff having to do with safety and security. But, but those kind of things, the spirit of the statute is allow board to have a small levy outside of the rest of their operational and facility levies to address these issues that they need to do so. Right, click for me if you would. And so in a nutshell, I'll get into the next slide, kind of bullet points, these kind of things. But QC puff bond is what you're doing is basically monetizing dollars to address some of these projects upfront. And then you're using a QC puff levy to generate dollars each year to make that principal interest payment over time and pay that back. And so QC puff bonds cannot exceed 10 years as a bond length, maturity length. And you're capped at three cents as far as the tax authority to generate those dollars and make those annual payments. So just a kind of bullet point highlighting the QC puff characteristics on the next slide. So up to 10 years, three cent maximum levy. The QC puff, when you do a bond and utilize the QC puff levy, it actually kind of pulls it outside of a lot of the limitations that you're faced with today. In the old days, we used to just talk about the dollar five. And so the QC puff, if you were pushing a dollar five for your general fund and the special building fund, and you needed to do some of these QC puff projects, you would take it outside of that. For most districts today, the dollar five levy limit, while it's still statutory, is really not the issue. It's that tax request growth cap you're faced with under LV243 that potentially taking this outside of that can benefit or free up some space under the general and special building fund. It also takes it outside the piece, the pink postcard as far as the tax request. And so dollar five levy limit, all those kind of things. It's not a bond that you, that you enter into by having a public vote. A majority vote of the board is what it would take to actually enter into a issuance of QC puff bonds. And so sorry, the space and kind of jumped off. But so just modeling 10 years using your current valuation of about 520 million. Current 10-year QC puff rate, we've done a few here recently. Dashler was our most recent. Rates are right around that 3.35%. So when you look at that rates, valuation, and the three cents, it looks like you could generate a project or a bond amount of about 1.190 dollars under those parameters. It is that point of time you issued a QC puff bond that you have to meet that, that three cent levy limit. So let's say you're going to move forward with something and you actually end up looking to issue four or five months from now. And if rates come down, then that three cents potentially could, could let your amount you could borrow actually increase. So as long as that final debt service amount under the bond amount stays under that three cents, depending on rate, that'd be kind of the limitation. So just to be clear, you know, it's pretty common sense, a pretty round number. But if you're going to levy three cents in addition to your other tax levies, three cents on 100,000 valuation would be a $30 per year tax increase for, for taxpayers. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Procedurally, it's very similar. I don't know if you guys have done a resolution before to issue any kind of bonds, but if you were going to move forward with something and you wanted to give, like, put authorization into place, we would reach out to a bond attorney on your behalf. QTAC Rock is the firm that's worked with the district in the past on your taxes and bond issuances. So they would basically help draft an agenda language and a resolution. It's a parameter resolution. So you'd be looking at considering approval of a resolution issued QC puff bonds in an amount not to exceed a certain dollar amount. So by that resolution, you're not even obligating yourself to go forward with the financing. You're just putting authorization in place. And that parameter number simply says we could choose to borrow up to this amount or any amount under it with that authorization in place. With that, I think I'll open up for questions. We've talked about it a little bit. What are some, some of the main categories you can use these funds for? Yeah, so, and Jake will probably give you that some too. And we, we usually are kind of the liaison. We are going to be the firm, if you work with us, that is up selling the bonds. We kind of work as a liaison between the district, the design specialist, and the bond attorney to kind of run potential projects the district's interested in, kind of vet them and make sure everybody's comfortable that they qualify under statute. So we're seeing roof replacement. When people say our, our insulation is saturated and we have leaking roofs, well, that's kind of a slam dunk for if you have moisture penetration, your, your potential for mold and things like that. ADA accessibility barriers are always pretty slam dunk, fire suppression stuff. You know, HVAC, HVAC for a while was done quite a bit. And then the legislature, this was about seven or eight years ago, kind of came down and said, you know, everybody's replacing their HVAC and just saying it's air quality. They kind of clamped down on that. And so HVAC became harder to get qualified. And then when COVID hit and some of the professionals were saying these new HVAC systems with the fresh air and things like that, it kind of came back on the forefront. So what the bond attorney wants to see is some kind of certified professional just kind of outlined in their opinion that by addressing these renovations or, or addressing these issues that you are basically abating an issue that would fall under that. I'm trying to think of, of other items, but I've seen kind of your ideas. I think some things become a stretch. And if you want us to look into it and run it by bond attorney and architect, we just kind of work through it and say, the bond attorney will say, well, can't quite get comfortable with that because what they're doing for you is providing a tax-exempt bond opinion on the debt. So you can get that tax-exempt rate. And so I think we can be creative and try to get it there, but you also want a good financing that nobody looks back on later and says, you know, this really shouldn't have qualified. And you receive tax-exempt status on that. So we don't want to take you down that route. I don't know. Is there anything specific you're wondering about that I didn't touch on? Oh, we've got a few ideas.
Cause you talked security too, is another.
Security, yeah. So we've seen, you know, I've worked on, well, speaking of Wood River, Wood River did their secure entry with QC puff bonds, I believe. So that whole project, because QC puff is really supposed to be renovation for the most part. New construction is a stretch, but if you can bring it under safety and security and everybody signs off on it, we are seeing some projects like that get done. I think the legislature put that in to give a little more flexibility because they clamp, it used to be 5.2 cents and then went down to three cents about eight years ago, maybe eight, nine, or 10 years ago.
Invesco meeting for Tobin?
Tobin, thank you.
You have?
Next item is Wilkins, Parker, Jacob.
Good evening, everyone. Jacob Surridge with Wilkins Architecture from Carnegie and Lincoln. I'm managing principal owner of our firm. Been doing a lot of work with public schools for many years, most of my career. Glad to be here and working for your school district. I am curious, Tobin, any idea how many, how many school districts are actively utilizing QC puff in the town of Nashville right now?
Why a few? So I was at a meeting the other night. Like I said, I think we've done four or five issued this year. A lot of, some districts are actually looking at hybrid approach. District, some districts are able to, what's called a lease purchase using their building funds. So some of them are tackling some of their needs through both the QC puff and then maybe a lease purchase as well. It just depends on your capacity, your building fund for that kind of thing. So more and more, I mean, it's pretty common. Do you want a number?
Probably seven. Well, I was just, I was scared.
Yeah, we can comment.
Yeah, so, yeah. So we met, I believe, October 30th, I met with the buildings and grounds committee to look at the potential scope of a project. And so at this point, what we're doing now is we're gathering all the existing building information. So we're modeling your existing building, gathering the information that we need to be able to then put together bidding documents to then put this out to bid to any interested and qualified general contractors in the region. So what we're looking at doing, and again, we're, we're just, you know, developing the existing information so we can build a demolition plan and those types of things and certainly the new, any new layouts or anything like that. But, you know, we're looking at, so the kitchen areas right here, of course, and there's some dry storage and workroom or freezers in here. And then you got the nurses area here currently. And then the restroom area just north of that, which extends over into the old concession stand and the custodial area up there. So that's kind of the, what we're looking at for scope of work for, for this remodel project. As of right now, the, the plan would be to, to annex this space over here, which is kind of your dish return is basically like over here to annex this space and make it a part of the kitchen. And then, so right now, the dishwasher area is right over here. So we're looking to relocate and move the dish machine and dish, dishwashing over into this annexed space over here between the kitchen and the restroom room. And then look at making updates to the, to the kitchen, the current kitchen, a lot of the, well, if you've been in there, of course, now there's a lot of very old, like, there's a lot of like the, the wood cabinets and those types of things are, are now frowned upon by the, by the health, it's the health inspector. And so we'd be looking to get rid of the wood cabinets. We go back in with stainless steel and more current and modern equipment. Potentially looking at some other equipment replacement as well, still to be determined on that. Uh potentially looking at some other equipment replacement as well, uh still to be determined on that. Uh we're also looking at potentially um in where there's currently the. Uh the smaller walk-in freezer, but perhaps um. Converting most of this storage room right here into a walk-in cooler and freezer unit. Um to then, that would then um replace uh so currently. You have a lot of uh reach in uh coolers uh that are within the kitchen proper there. Uh so if we can do a walk-in cooler and freezer unit here, that will free up more space. Um the kitchen so that it can be um you know, proper space to do uh the. Uh the kitchen activities uh and also but but safe operating clearances as well, certainly. Uh in the kitchen area there along with uh updating uh the the finishes in those spaces as well. Um we're also potentially looking at um um this workroom here area. Um we're gonna, we're gonna revamp that area and convert a portion of that to uh to dry storage. So there's actually a. An actual dedicated dry storage space and something also too that the. Uh the health inspector, that's what they would prefer to see. Um and then um. And then we're also looking at potentially um doing a uh a creating a restroom for the nurses area. Up in this area here, we could take advantage of the plumbing that's very close by with the existing restrooms up here, which. Um which will then also uh as a part of this project, we're looking at. Uh completely getting those restrooms there, redoing those. There's some. Uh there's some uh plumbing issues there below the floor, uh we'll take care of that. We'll also then. Uh and certainly easy qualifier with the the QC puff uh would be uh addressing ADA. Uh accessibility issues, which will, that'll all be taken care of with this project here. We are looking at potentially expanding the restroom slightly um and. Basically aligning, creating a new wall that would align with um classroom four hundred. Uh and that ways extend over here uh to the west side um and then um. We would create the. Along with the larger restrooms, slightly larger restrooms, we'd also then um look at um. Converting what's now still the old session stand, there's still some of the old counter in there and everything like that, but making that into. Um a better um janitorial building services um area for. Uh for the building, you know, usable and functional. Um and so that's kind of the the basic uh scope of this project that we're looking at. Uh a lot of this uh should be able to utilize uh the QC puff. Uh and again, Tobin touched on uh some of the the qualifying. Uh types of things that would uh that qualify for the uh for using the QC puff. Uh so we're looking at uh you know, as much of that as possible to uh to be able to utilize QC puff for. Uh from making these proposed improvements uh to uh to these spaces here. So. Schedule wise, uh we're we're jumping on it. Uh we. Uh we jumped on it quick and uh we're wanting to get up to speed as quick as we can so that we can hopefully. Uh ideally, I'd like to get uh this project out to bid if uh if you're good with it, um probably. In uh hopefully in in uh January, which then I think we'll still be able to get good bids for the work to take place then this next summer. If we can get this out to bid uh in January, maybe the bids will come back early February. Uh but we'll fine tune that schedule uh and we'll report back to you on that, but I think that'll still be a good. A good time to uh to bid out uh the summer project would be uh in that timeframe there, so. Um questions, I'll certainly gonna be coming back, uh whether it's with the building committee or a full. Uh a full report to the to the board. Um you know, we'll be having, I would I would guess we'll have probably two. Two review meetings uh likely as we get along to the design and details of uh of the renovation. Uh so um but questions, uh what questions do you?
You said a lot. What could be covered by? What's the percentage? Or what are you guessing this percentage will be covered by QC puff and the other percentage will not?
Okay, yeah. Um I would say that so definitely without a doubt, all of the all of the restroom work there. I'd say that's all QC puff. I like to say uh QC. Puffable, it's all QC puffable, but they're all the restroom uh work for sure. Um and then I would also say um some of the equipment in here because of. The 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 concerns with the environmental concerns with the with the food safety. Uh in those things, I would I would put a portion uh and I. It might be difficult right now to to place an exact number or percentage on that, but also then looking at two uh. From from an environmental standpoint with the uh with like the hood and the ventilation in there in the kitchen. Uh and that's something I need to, engineers were just here a couple days ago, so I have not had a chance yet to. To get their opinion on that, but I think that would be also another qualifier as well would be. Uh the the ventilation and making sure that that that's up to code in the in the kitchen space then, so.
Gestimate.
Gestimate. I I think.
Of the kitchen, yes, and how much can go QC puff and how much will not?
I think, I think upwards of fifty to seventy percent somewhere in there. I would, that just just, I haven't, I haven't analyzed that yet, but that's just. Just shooting from the hip, if you will.
That's fine.
From what um you know.
And we can, we can start the process of you kind of providing me those items. With estimates and be starting communicating with the bond attorney. And that'll allow you to kind of really pin down what everybody believes could be financed and that. That could be figured out in the next couple of weeks or so.
Any other questions?
This may be kind of a question for Tobin, but you said thirty thirty dollars basically per hundred thousand in asset value. Is there pushback? Large landowners or anything that you've ran into? It could be substantial. Tax increase.
Obviously, right now uh we're getting pushed back when we're doing. Voiding bond issues and things like that. I I can't speak and promise, but it seems like. QC puff projects by the nature of them. Haven't received as much pushback. It's kind of like, these are things we need to oppress. It's not like you're just wanting to do something nice. You're abating some. Issues that need to be done. And so it feels like, and Jake has spoken to this too, it's been for a lot of them. They do seem more acceptable. Now, whether you have the capacity to. Change your other taxes offset a little bit is up to you. Um so I'm just showing basically you put the three cents on and. Nothing else changes, the QC puff alone, that's what would be dedicated to that. But uh it does seem. Comparability to other types of projects, they do seem most often more acceptable if that's.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else? If not, thank you, Jacob, for coming and we'll be very much in discussion with you.
It sounds good. Thank you for having me here. Thank you.
Let's move on to number eight. This is a recognition of visitors and public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, this is appropriate time to do so, or if you'd rather comment on a specific agenda item. You may do so at this time. Please scan this picture name, address and name of the organization. You may be representing for the record. Individuals may speak only one time unless limited comments provided. If there's more than six people. Individuals who wish to speak, the thirty minutes will be divided equally between the speakers. If you're planning to speak about personnel or a student matter involving an individual, please understand that the district has complained and policy procedures. To resolve such complaints, concerns, board members will generally not respond to any questions you ask or comments of either your staff's. Members or students. This is a public meeting for the conduct of business, comments from the audience. While others are speaking will not be tolerated, illude, obscene, profane, slanderous, threatening and hostile conduct or statements. And fighting words will not be tolerated. The board will not act on any item unless it is a published agenda item. But that all being said, welcome. Does anybody would like to have a comment? Make a comment. Okay, hearing that, let's go on to number nine, which is reports. Nine A, elementary reports, Mr. Gunderson.
Yes, uh we just had the veterans program today. Uh went well, well attended. It was probably the largest crowd I've seen since I've been here, so well attended. With that, the students made Veteran Day posters. They were displayed down at the Legion. When they had their soups up around Saturday, then we got them back up here, had them all hung up in the commons for everybody to see. We had the literacy night uh well attended there too. Uh that was honestly the first one I've been to, but I was surprised the kids enjoyed it. Uh families enjoyed it, so that went well. We had our Halloween. Uh parties and parades. Uh we paraded around the school. We went over to the care center. And the students walked through there with their costumes and stuff, and everybody really enjoyed that. Uh we finally got the student of the month going. So we have a student of the month, we're calling that captains. And then from the captains, we picked two out of that, but everyone sees that's above and beyond, and we call those the admins. So and Dave's place was nice to sponsor that for us, so we take those guys out to Dave's place for pizza, so they really enjoy that.
And he made his first bulletin board.
Yeah, go over there and look at it. Well, Brittany made it too.
I mean, you did a lot of the work. I am impressed.
Are you artistic?
No.
But he can use a stapler.
Is this all?
Thank you. The next item will be the high school principal's department's.
All right, um right now between Mrs. Sandberg and Mr. Gunderson and I, we are. Full bore for external visit um the twentieth and twenty first. Mrs. Sandberg has been. So integral in this process. We are so grateful for her, but right now we're just trying to stack all the data and put it in a. Pretty format um as our external visit. It's like right around the corner. Uh National FFA last month, um it's weird saying last month because it was like two weeks ago, but. It was a great experience for all of our kiddos. They really enjoyed it. Um Mrs. Gunnan and Chad Kirchner sponsored that and supervised that trip. Again, super grateful for them for giving our kids that experience. Um. We set our maps challenge. Uh high school will do NWEA testing the ninth through the eleventh of December. Um students who make their growth goal, um they'll take the seventeenth as a bonus no school day. So we had. Really good results with that last year. It bought them in and they were invested and. In a junior high high school, that's half the battle is getting them to actually actually try and invest themselves. So. Um and then rather than student of the month, we've done quarter one no referral events the past couple years. We. Did student of the month with that last year, but we couldn't really find a way to make it drive. Um so we just just did our Q one no referral event and we did, you crushed it. I don't know if you guys know, but like. The dirty soda trend is a huge thing. So you take a pop and you put creamer in it and it's like this big thing and kids love it. They didn't taste that bad, but they ate it up. We celebrated sixty seven students. So in order to do that, they can't have tardies. Um and they can't have any behavioral referrals, but they were making some concoctions. The Dr. Pepper took the cake. Uh yep, I know what it sounds like. Wasn't that? Um they loved it. He just wants the pop and that's creamer. I don't know. Well, I, when I took student council to the student council date. It was probably your child. Um yeah, yeah, I took. I saw him getting fountain Dr. Peppers and the creamer, the little creamer cups, and they were like putting the creamer in it. What are you guys doing? It's a whole thing, you guys. So it actually was good. I'll give it to them. Um activities and participation, winter practice practices start Monday, so here we go. Um I listed all activities, coaches and sponsors because for winter sports because there's been some shifts, so. Um I won't read that to you. We hosted our first junior high wrestling meet last week. Um around two hundred and fifty wrestlers were here. It was a full house. Um Mrs. Wilson did a great job of kind of coordinating that effort and running the track wrestling side. I was, I was really proud of. The way she kind of handled all of that. Um we ran around Robin bracket because there were so many kids, so we only awarded first place, but. Colby Kramer, Brogan Ruff, Vaughn Barrett, Brody Nicholson, Mason Thielander, Ryder Ruff and Keely Hathaway were our first place winners. At that meet. Um one act performed eh at North Pot High this past weekend and they got third place out of twelve teams, so. I've heard really good things about um their play this year, so I'm excited to see it. Kids are excited about it. Um junior high Quiz Bowl. Was yesterday um seventh, one, three matches, eighth, one, four. They weren't quite in the final. Um for that meet, but they typically do really well, so I'm excited to celebrate them too. Upcoming events for me, tomorrow I leave for Tri-State Sped um in Omaha, so that's always a really good conference. Um KSB attorneys present a lot there, just about all the. All the things, special education, and then state principals conference is the third and the fourth of December. November activities are there for you. Come out if you can, if you're around.
Thank you. Next item is a superintendent's report, Mr. Otz.
Okay, uh so outside of there, them talking about facilities and some of the things that we're looking at. Uh something that I am gonna start just trying to find information on. Is a curtain replacement on the stage. I don't know if you've been up there lately, but those curtains are completely ripped. Actually have one falling down in the back. Uh I've been in contact with Dell. There's a company out of Denver that I'm gonna reach out to tomorrow. Um we've got a quote from Omaha. It's extremely expensive. It sounds like if we go through Denver, that maybe we can space this thing out over three or four years and try to break it apart. Um so I'm gonna contact them tomorrow and try to create a plan or at least get an idea of if that's doable. Um transportation wise, nothing new to report. Academics, reminder December nineteenth, we're not having school for kids. Teachers will have a workday that day, but we will have no kids because that is our. High school wrestling meet and just with the amount of kids in the building, we're just uh trying to make it safe for everybody. Um I'll have the annual report of the community will be presented next month. Uh our data is still embargoed until November twenty six. So I couldn't even present it if I wanted to. Um but it will be presented in December. It has to be done by December thirtieth, I think is when it has to be presented, so. Um uh school updates, Dan Wilkin is going to resign as AD at the end of the school year. He was so stay teaching, so stay coaching. He just. Uh visited with me, um just AD side's getting a little harder for him right now and he he feels like. He wants to give it to somebody that'll, you know, be in love with being the AD, so. Um legislation wise, uh conference in Lincoln on December eleventh. And that's the legislation preview. I will. Either attend that via Zoom or in Lincoln, depends on what time it starts. So if it starts early, I will Zoom, because I'm not gonna get leave here at five AM. Uh first day of legislative legislative session is January seventh, and it should be a short, it's a short session, it's not should be, it is a short session this year. Um some upcoming dates, one act uh in Holdridge and in Gothenburg. I'll drive both of those. State conference is next week. Uh Thanksgiving break, District One Act, Drive Two, winter competition starts and then reminder of twelve nineteen no. School for kids is the teacher workday. Something else that I'd like to to kind of put on your radar. January nineteenth is a Monday. That is the first day of our external team visit and we will have our board. Uh be part of that. I'd like us all to be part of that meeting. So kind of tentatively right now, looking at uh five thirty to six thirty. Meeting here and then when we're done with our team meeting. If you, if you want to, then we'll go over to Pals and eat with the external team. We as the administrative team will go. If you as the board would also like to go and eat at Pals, I figure we just order some pizzas. Uh and and sort of their but just kind of put that on your radar right now that January nineteenth at five thirty, it's a Monday. That's the tentatively five thirty is kind of what we talked about, but I'm.
I think that's pretty solid too.
As we get closer to it, yeah. So just, so you're aware, uh so it doesn't sneak up on you. I'll I'll continue to send that information out to you. And we try to help remind you as it gets closer, but just something else to add on there. Or why they don't have too much else, look at the questions for me.
Or reports. Um the one thing that I I do have is that you guys all should have got your emails from KSB. For the new uh superintendency doc. So I know I've got mine, you're shaking. Yes, did you get it yet?
I haven't. I don't know. That it was coming after.
I actually gave people. So I will double check, so I will work on that tomorrow. And because it did get it.
Who does it come from though?
It was coming from KSB, not from me.
Okay.
Because they will actually.
I mean, you catch my eyes and ends KSB, maybe I.
Yeah, so, okay, I will reach back out to them, but I did call MDE. I don't know where my paperwork got lost at. They found it. And they approved it within twenty four hours. So. That happened this last week when I reached out to them. So we now can use KSB's superintendent eval tool. Um. Those of you that's going to a state conference that's coming up. I'm gonna bow out. As of the husband surgery and he's still on, which is in, you should have seen his face when I said I was gonna be gone for three days. So I'm gonna need a good one and stay home. So, but you guys all have fun for me. Yeah, and bring back a lot of good information. Your comments for board reports.
Except for Chad, you don't get a comment.
Yeah, exactly. Don't tell all of our seniors. Okay, uh, let's go on to treasures report. Chad.
Yes. So we're looking good. Receipts are currently seventeen point seven six. Uh, should be sixteen point six seven. Uh, expenditures are currently at nineteen five eight, should be at twenty five.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda items. On item number thirteen, thirteen A is approval of our regular meeting minutes on ten fourteen twenty five. And the approval of the general funds and the, in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and two dollars and seventy cents.
So moved.
Got it first. Do I have a second?
Second.
We got a second roll call, please.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Chad Lanis.
Yes.
Randy Buscher.
Yes.
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Kyle Stevenson.
Yes.
Hey, motion carried. Let's go on down to. Items that the action items and fourteen fourteen A is the AMGL CPA and advisors two thousand and twenty five audit report. Uh, do we have a motion to approve this Southern Public Schools two thousand twenty five financial audit report as presented?
So moved.
I got it first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any more discussion? The one thing I do wanna bring out, I have never seen an audit where they don't cite you for something. And they did not cite her for anything. Nothing.
Like, so.
Yes.
They go through my trash. The half of a yellow sticky. But I think there's a finding though, isn't there?
You don't have to, I think.
Follow up email. Are you sure?
Well, because we talked about it, so we, we got our letter and it said there were no findings and I said. Okay, we need to follow up on that because I've never seen that before. And then she sent the email back to me and I was like. Okay, I guess. So, yeah, we made sure that it wasn't a mistake.
Yes. So which, okay, that being said, roll call, please.
Uh, Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Chad Lanis.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Kyle Stevenson.
Yes.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Randy Buscher.
Yes. Hey, motion carried. Uh, the next item is fourteen B and this is the WWE consultant contracts, uh, Wayne.
Wayne Weans.
Weans, that's what I was wondering. I'd like you go ahead and talk about this one.
Okay, so Wayne works currently for ESU ten. Wayne has, so when I was at Osceola, Wayne worked with me. Wayne is. Somebody that I trust, that I know knows power school. Uh, then I brought Wayne into our building a little bit. Um, Wayne has been working with Bree. And working with Kasia, A with state reporting and with. Kind of revamping some of our power school administrative side. Um, and I feel like. This is something that we need to, like. Wayne has said, hey, you know, I get, this is my job, get paid for this. Um, so I did a, put a consult. Contract together for him with him. Um, that does not pay him more than you would pay if you got into ESU ten, but we belong to ESU sixteen. So we can't get into ESU ten. The other thing that this benefits us on is Wayne's close to retirement through ESU ten. If he retires. We can still have Wayne work for us because we're not paying into retirement. So this does not affect him to be able to work for us. So. Um, it is something that I, I, I feel like. Benefits the district. I don't foresee him using the forty hours. Um, I think we can be done in ten hours, but I did put up there forty hours, whatever cost. The hundred and fifty dollars to forty hours gets you to the sixty one fifty, which is. About fifty dollars less than you would pay if you paid into ESU ten, so. But I, I really think ten to twenty hours is probably all we're utilizing for.
And we need the ten to twen- I mean. I've, he has been so helpful to me, you guys, and. Yeah.
Does ESU sixteen not offer?
I, they don't have. They're not the depth of knowledge that Wayne would be. So the next step, if we chose not to go with Wayne. The next step would be getting to the ESU CC. Like rolling, so then they, they kind of how help house your data, not house your data. Help go through your data with you, help to make sure that all of your stuff's in line, and that's seventy five hundred dollars a year or so. Um, ESU, I believe, has a person that's not as, not as in-depth knowledge as Wayne is. She's more. Of a surface level ESU person. Probably as dangerous as I am in any issue on, on powerschool. Wayne actually came out and presented at ESU sixteen. Last spring, I think, Kasia went and, and that was kind of how I got Kasia hooked up with him too. His last spring, he came out, presented the ESU sixteen, so.
And Brent and I have even prior to Brett, like we've worked with Wayne when we built scheduling. So like he's been, he's worked with the district before and. Um, just it wouldn't, not at this, quite this capacity, but we need to do a, a pretty big cleanup. Of the backside of power school.
And we have compensation to this point.
Correct, yeah.
Do you anticipate this would be a yearly thing or?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And I think we can change this as the years go on. I don't think we will need him as much after we kind of get set up that we would go, I mean, maybe we would move it down to twenty hours, you know, and then. And less and less, yeah.
Any more questions? Everybody understands? Do I have a motion? One more, yeah.
Motion to approve.
I've got it first. Do I have a second?
Well, second.
Any more discussion? Hearing them roll call.
Janet.
Yes.
Mom.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes. Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Motion carry. Next item is fourteen C. This is the two thousand twenty six, two thousand and twenty seven negotiated agreement. It is attached, Mr. Wester, or does the, um, negotiating committee want to talk about it?
We, we went into negotiations on November third and we came out with an agreement. Um, and it is all laid out in front of us, uh, it's a nine hundred dollar. Um, add onto the base to put our base next year at thirty nine five, uh. We see the new insurance is in there. Um, there was a little bit of language added that that I highlighted in here, um, in Article Five and Article Seven. Um, kind of defined what, um, immediate family meant. Um, and then there were a couple. Uh, percents, there's one percent added to three different activity spots and then they. Added on Math Olympiad as a new. Um, additional. To sponsor.
The definitions in Article Five and Seven matches what's in the contracts, correct? For immediate family. I'm gonna have to check. There is something in there, but we probably need to make sure that those contracts don't match. Because I know there's verve in there about immediate family.
Yeah. I, I thought negotiations went really good. I mean, I feel like it was for my first ever one year, I, I feel like. We had a plan, we kind of knew, and the teachers, I'm, I think it went really good. And so.
Do I have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty six, two, two thousand twenty seven, twenty seven negotiated agreement?
So move the hair.
I got it first. Do I have a second? So. Any more discussion? Hearing them roll call.
Randy.
Yes.
Kyle.
Draft abstain. By why?
Eh, yes.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Um, yes.
A motion carry. Let's go to fourteen D, which is Wilkins Architect Plan.
Oh my gosh, I did not attach this, did I? Okay, um, I apologize for that, I. And we, let me, give me a second. Yeah. So this is, this is the contract that Cody from KSB drew up. For us, uh. To use, here it is. I will make sure this is attached moving forward. I don't know why I did not do this. Um. So this talks about the contract with Wilkins Architect. So if we proceed to go forward with Wilkins. That we only pay. The con, the construction part, once construction happens is when we start paying. That contract. If we stop, if we, if we get. To January, we decide, hey, we're out. There's a percent in here and I gotta remember if it's. Seventy percent goes to the construction bid, so you would pay eleven percent, ten percent of that seventy percent. Back to Wilkins for the work that they did prior to the construction. So this was, that was what. I remember right, that's how Cody. Who's part of KSB, Cody Pruitt, how he explained it to. So this is just the contract. I was going to try to find those numbers in here specifically. Right here. Okay, so the. So the scheme of design phase, the design development, the construction is fifty and then the construction phase, so. We would be, so the design and the construction, even though we didn't go to construction, we would. Cody explained it to me that he would somehow be. Because that was supposed to be the scope of the work, you would pay a percent of those two things back to Wilkins Architect. If you decided. That you weren't gonna move forward with the project. So Wilkins would still make some money out of it. And he said, that's. That is how they do all of their contracts out, um. If you remember to the team that I sent out, the building and grounds team, remember when we looked at? It was. Nine and a half, nine, was it nine point? Seven five percent of the total project would go to Wilkins Architect if it was over a million dollars. Do you remember those numbers specifically? Okay. But that was the. That was the motion that he sent to me. So. So for us to go forward. We have to. We have to have this contract in place. This. According to Cody protects us from. Us having to spend, overspending money.
So there's no way to get a bid on a project that we're curious about without putting my.
Correct.
Correct. That's scary.
Yeah.
Go back down to those still, so we can try to retailize.
Yes. Oh, here. Is this the one? Compensation, yeah, the architect's basis service described down here. So under a hundred thousand is hourly, so a million dollars more would be seven point five. Seven five percent of the contract sum. That's the number. Okay, so that's the number that we would pay the percent of the seven point seven five percent. Of what would be, so if our bid came back at one point one mil. And we decide, hey, we're not gonna do this project. We then pay. A percent of that seven point seven five percent.
Ten percent of the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So you know, like seventy five hundred dollars as opposed to seventy my.
Right, correct.
Which makes sense because.
Yeah, they got a lot of work to do. I just.
Right.
It's scary to say, hey, what? Do we have options for without knowing what?
Right, and I, and, and I talked to Cody on the phone. I asked him that specific thing. He said, is this, is this how it always happens? He said, this is, this is across the board. If you're gonna do any project like this, this is how it starts. He said, if you, doesn't matter who you go with. And then I asked him, I said, so are the numbers from Wilkins Architect higher or lower than he said? He said, honestly, they're, they're right on par with everybody else that we work with. So I, I don't, I don't know if that answers, like if that gives you any.
I feel better, I feel better about paying a penalty if I hired somebody else midstream or after you did work, but I don't, nobody's boring, not that I can say on it. You know, instead of having them do a whole bunch of work and then hire a different firm.
Right, right, yeah.
So where is it that it says what that percentage is? That's what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, ten percent of the whole.
Yeah.
Two percent.
Yeah, ten percent.
Which, I mean, you get limited seventy five hundred bucks.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah, and it does, and they do more work. I mean, right, let's be honest, so.
It's probably in most of the contracts.
We have them.
Imagine they do a lot of.
Do the design for the kitchen, the bathroom, your storage room. All that. Is that amounts that we get bids back for? Are we responsible for that? Say, would, would we go with just the kitchen remodel?
No.
Say we want to do just the kitchen, we got bids for everything and that's too much money.
Right, I don't believe so. I shouldn't say no at a hundred percent. I don't believe so because we would still be using them. For the project, we would just have to narrow our project down. And so whatever our final project came in at is what we would be responsible for.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to pay them a percentage of the work that they did to redesign the bathrooms.
If we decide. Uh, you know what? I will. I will follow up with Cody tomorrow and asking that question. Uh, I, let me just to get some. Clarification on that. And then I'll share that with everybody tomorrow. I'm going to say, I'm going to say no. I don't believe that's how that works, but I will ask him, um. Just to make sure, because I've been to a project where we had bids and then we had to go back and redo the bids. And then, so that project came way down. I don't know that answer to that question if we only pay for the final project. Uh, cost.
Sure, because we're having them design multiple areas and if we just. Cut out half like resign, I didn't know if they wanted compensated for the part of the design that we didn't use, right, that.
Well, maybe the ten percent would come off that side that we didn't, you know.
So I would say, since we don't have the question, the answers for that tonight, if we go ahead and vote on this, we're voting on thinking that it will be. Will pay on all of it. That's, you gotta, if you vote on this, you gotta consider it as the worst case scenario since we don't know the answer.
Can we table until he finds out?
That'll be for next month and then it puts everything behind.
We couldn't vote between, I mean, midweek or.
We have to have a meeting. Special meeting.
Yeah, we, yeah. I just text Cody.
Which I was wondering, why don't we go on to another item?
That's what I was gonna do.
And see if Cody will get back to us. So let's go on to item fourteen E, which is a superintendent board goals that was, uh. Uh, put together when, uh, NASB came out and we set together for our role planning. And they are attached, there's these right here. And so I think everybody's.
For me to answer this on speakerphone. Cody's calling right now.
Oh, go ahead, well, go ahead.
Okay. Cody, hey, it's Brett. How are you? I'm good. Hey, we're going through the contract, uh, for Wilkins Architect. Okay, so the question becomes. If we get, we get to January, we decide, nope, we're not gonna do this. We have, we pay the ten percent. Um, uh, on that seven point seven five percent. Okay, so the next question is. What happens if they make it, they design the bathrooms and? Okay. I'm just saying, if we, if we get to January and, and Jacob comes back with a design and we decide we're not gonna do any of it, I just, I'm just throwing out of mind. Right, right, right. So he, he's done the schematic design and we get to, we get the point where we're getting ready to maybe go to bids. And then we just decide we're not gonna do, we're not gonna move forward. And then we just decide we're not gonna do, we're not gonna move forward.
Okay, so if you look, I don't have it in front of me, but if you look at the phases, right, it's like.
Yep.
Schematic design, design development, construction drives, that's because at that point you said. This is the scope of the project, it's this big physically, um you know, if you wanna go, they're gonna take that all the way to. Plans specs, if you go to bid and get a bid from a contractor, so if you have the architecture firm do all that work.
Yeah.
They're gonna at least got through that phase, so whatever percentages that are on that kind of schedule. Multiplied by seven five, multiplied by the fee, multiplied by, you know, your your cost estimate at the time is what they're gonna have heard. But I suspect if you decide you you don't wanna do it, you're gonna. At least usually you're gonna decide way before you say it's the turn your architect lose, say, yeah, get planned specs.
Right. And then, and so Cody, you're on speakerphone with the whole board right now.
And is it just the board or their patrons and public?
There there's people sitting here too.
Okay. Received legal advice, which is fine.
Okay.
So maybe have the board chair entertain a motion to enter closed session. Because it's in the public interest to do so, receive legal advice.
Um, do I have that motion? Does that have to be public, publicized?
Do we have to publicize it, we're?
So we can always go into and out of closed section. To talk about any of the.
Okay, so do I have a motion to go into closed section to discuss?
So I will make motion.
Do you have a first and a second, so again, the motion is to go into closed session to um discuss his architect uh contract. Um what that means, same.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that is at seven fifteen, we're going in closed session. Uh that needs shut off. So yeah, I would, I would like to hear a cost estimate from him and then. I guess.
I wanna know if they take it through the lawyers, now that's through.
First national.
First national. Can they take what we want to do through the lawyers? Through Tech Rock to determine if it's gonna be covered from Houston or how.
I can talk to Tobin about.
To me, that would be separate from the architect.
Yes.
That would be, yeah.
I wonder if it have to know, I I wonder if the, if. Tobin would have to know what the scope of the project would be to take to the lawyers to find out, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but I think they've probably done it enough that we could say like for a bathroom remodel, are they only gonna pay for the ADA stall? Or are they gonna come back and say, yes, we'll pay for the whole bathroom? Like, I mean, those, those are questions I think we could answer, because that, those are my concerns right now, are they gonna say, we'll pay for? The stall, but not everything in the bathroom that you're doing, that we'll pay for the vents. But we're not gonna pay for walk-in storage, I think there there could be some theoretical questions asked that could give us a better idea.
And it changed the whole amount of the, the bond we were asked, I mean, we could be asked for half as much for us. So, we gotta figure that out.
Which, and actually, they made the comment, we could do up to the one point one, but that doesn't mean that's what we're going to actually take, we just approve the one point one, because that's the max, but. Yeah, I guess I I wanna know exactly that cost estimate. How much is actually really can go QC puff and how much would have to come out of our, our building fund?
So do we need a motion to table this?
Yes. Your roll call.
Eric?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion carried on tabling uh fourteen D, let's go on to fourteen, which. E, which is the superintendent board goals, we've started in on that. Do I have a motion to approve these, these are for both of the superintendent and the board as well? We have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
I think they did a really good job. Together.
Yeah, I do too, I really like what we did.
That was motion to approve four goals.
Yes, the motion. There for both of us. Who was my second, I'm sorry.
Eric.
Eric, you do. Roll call please. Miss Brandy, Erin, yes.
Uh Kyle?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes, Eric.
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
The motion carried, let's go to fourteen F, which is uh bound contract. Mister Webster, I'll let you go into that one.
Okay, so currently we are using our school to provide all of our game contracts, RF contracts, hours, our activities. Which we are trying to put all of our school um events on that. Calendar, which is then linked to our website. At the end of this school year, our school no longer exists. Arbiturer has bought them out. Bound is the other, the other group that does the exact same thing, so you have two groups that we can, we can look at. Um arbitrator has really bad, I shouldn't say really bad, arbitrator has struggled with getting. Um back to me about um. What it would cost, um and and things of that nature. Bound is really quick uh to get back to me, Bound is a company based out of Iowa. Um I sat in a Zoom, Mister Guttersen sat with me, and they went through all of the stuff that's on their platform. So if we go to Bound, which is. What I would suggest we do, um we would look at. Bound basic versus Bound Pro Plus. Uh Bound Basic is five hundred dollars a year, I believe that's what we pay for our school right now, right? Though we kinda talked about the other day was that was similar in nature, yeah. Um Bound Pro Plus is nothing per year. If we go to Bound Pro Plus, we pay zero dollars per year, except for we bring their terminals into our school. Allowing for patrons to pay with card, could buy tickets with card, could. Pay at the door with card, could also use these at the concession stand, don't have to use them, but they're there to be used. So in selling this, they said that you you were supposed to try to get to eighty percent of your ticket sales. Used through this credit card machine, so in a follow-up email, I said, hey, I don't think there's any way in the world we could get to eighty percent. What do you do for small schools? And his response was, if you are actively trying to use the machine and you have it available. They kind of look the other way at small schools. That was what his response was, he said, is, so I took actively using, as we are promoting, hey, we have this out there. We encourage you to use it, but that doesn't mean that people, we can't force people to use it, right? Um Paxton did just go with this, they are going Bound Plus as well, so they're using it at the gate. Um and uh I was just talking to George Genson, right, he's the AD. Um he was showing me today that they, he can, you can purchase tickets online. And then, when do people come into your? Facility and they pay cash, you just click cash and then you, and then you put how many people it was. So it gives you a printout of, at the end of the night, of how much cash and card you have and how many spectators are at your events. So he's really excited about that. Um they are not gonna start with the concessions right away, but he said that is probably the direction they will end up going, so. Um I know Maxwell's another school that's really coming on board with this. There's a couple conferences that have gone to using this uh Bound, so like Fort Kearney Conference. Um they just approved it as all the conference schools and SPBA, they were another one, actually. Paxton got in on SPBA's contract because they thought Paxton was part of SPBA, so um but. They got taken back out, so. As we move forward, we need to have a system that's that's gonna be able to put contracts out, we're kinda getting to a bind now, where like people are wanting to start sending us contracts. And we don't have anything moving forward, so we have to make a decision going one way or the other, I would just say we go Bound. We don't have, I think we need to go to the Pro Plus, it's it's gonna be free, and then if if they evaluate us and they're like, hey, we're gonna have to, you're gonna have to go to the basic. Then we go to the basic, but they'll evaluate us after a year and see where we're at. Right, and I would assume they'll probably give you two years to try to increase those ca- uh credit card numbers. Um but again. We'll encourage people to use it, but that doesn't mean they have to, they can still bring cash, there is a, there is a fee, that's the other side. The fee is associated, it's ninety cents for any ticket sold under five dollars. Uh. Anything, anything sold, I think it's over ten dollars, is that right, Jason, was it over ten dollars?
That's ten.
It was ten dollars and not ninety. Um, yeah, I think, I think it was. Up to ten dollars was ninety cents, and then anything over ten was five percent. Right.
That's pretty commonplace, though, I mean.
Right, that's right.
So I said, most of the time, it's already, they inflated the price to cover. Otherwise you have it. On under, yes, but above the ten dollars, then it's down to your, your base. Basically, your, your terminal fee, it costs to go across those channels.
And, yeah, and and. And we're gonna be very transparent with patrons too, that, hey, this is here, this is the fee that you are gonna have to pay, you don't have to pay with your card. It is going to be there for your convenience if you choose to use it. I think, what do you think? Four people come to the game. It's over ten dollars.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's right, do we still charge the patron the same, so say, a family comes in, it's in its five dollars per person to get in. And do we charge them the five dollars and the fee, or do do we?
Yes, we charge them the five dollars and the fee. Correct. Yep, and and we're gonna be very upfront with that, we're gonna, we're gonna tell people this is exactly what happened, but it's just like if you go out to eat. If you, you know, if you order online, convenience be.
The same thing, you go to the Lincoln County Treasures and you get license for your vehicle, there's a sign that says, use your credit card, it'll be a three percent added. Same thing.
And we will, yeah, we will not hide it, it will be out in front of everybody, so if you choose to do that.
Could youth sports use it?
Youth sports can use it for all of their camp signup, so you can put this on.
What about like if there's a youth wrestling term?
Youth wrestling could use it.
The parents use their card, because working the door that, you have so many people walk in, they're like, oh, I forgot money.
And we'll get a printout.
It's, it'll be used a lot.
I think it'll get used so much at those events.
No, nobody thinks twice about that fee anymore, because it's been around for so long. So.
Don't do a student out and do an adult, you just do a flat, six dollars admission.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that'd be handy for some youth, youth activities.
And and, yeah, so all of your summer camps that you have, they could, people can sign up on here, they can, they can sign up, they can pay with their card, it's done. They don't have to work out anything, uh you know, you have to try to chase people down.
And we could do that with like high school camps too.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, once you figure out all the things that Bound would do, that's what I like about it, when he, when. He called me about it, said just for contracts, it's like, um we're paying KSB to do contracts, what's the big deal? But then when you get all this other stuff in on it.
And it'll integrate right into our, like their calendar, integrate right into our website, so it'll just.
I, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve Bound Pro Plus as our new platform.
Got a first and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Kyle?
Yes.
Uh Shad?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Motion carried. Fourteen G.
It's not a, it's not an action item.
No.
Uh I'm planning on coming back as long as you guys will do my evaluation in November, okay?
Yeah.
Just so. So it's out there.
So.
Is that news to you, you were hoping that I was not?
No, I was gonna say, we have already discussed this, that you're not leaving. Do the evaluation when we want. He's staying anyway, whether we do it next month or not, okay, so. Okay, so he just had to give notice this month, so thank you very much on that, where it helped me get to our stain, always dying. My will, it's been a lot easier since you've come forward, so with that going forward, now let's go to fifteen. And this will be fifteen A, this will be the prove the tardiness of Shad for today's meeting.
So dirty.
Shad is dirty too, but they worked it for me this time.
Yeah. So I will make that motion. Hey, got a first and second, any more discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Shad?
Stan.
Oh. Okay. I'm in some trouble here, uh Eric?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes, motion carried, next meeting, there has been some, a little discussion about this. Uh December ninth is when our next meeting meeting is supposed to be. I heard there might have been a little discussion concerning it's the ninth and it's so soon for the bills to be paid for Ms. Alicia. If we go to the following Monday, that is the third Monday, so no matter what, even if there's a blizzard, we have to have meeting, period. So, is there a day like that Wednesday night, or do we wanna try that following Monday, or do we wanna? Put Alicia under the barrel and still hold it on the night? And not have a perfect audit.
I will, I will be absent on the night, if we added them.
Fifteen works for me, but I don't know if that's.
I usually don't get done working till like six thirty-ish, there's seven on Mondays.
We can push it back, we push it back to seven on Monday, the fifteenth.
Eric? That makes it, I can do seven, you can always do me in seven, okay. Six is kinda tough, yeah.
Will be done by then.
Dad said at bottom, on the fifteen, fifteen.
Do I have a motion to approve December fifteenth at seven o'clock for our December meeting? Got a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Randy?
Yes.
Shad?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
The motion carried, meeting adjourned at seven forty nine.